You guys good?
Sure.
Okay, number 11. Resolution approving the final plat of Swisher subdivision.
This is a subdivision off of West Avenue. You may have seen the auction signs located there. They're looking to subdivide off the two existing residential homes on West Avenue, and then two large outlots behind the property that would, based on them being outlots, would require further preliminary plat in order to develop them down the road. This kind of shows the area just to the east of the Garden Lawn-Dill area residential development. It's owned in Ruth Swisher Trust at this time. It's just north of Sunrise West as well, so essentially it's creating two existing, two lots where the homes are now, and then two outlots that would have to be further subdivided in the future.
No problems?
This is up for auction?
Mm-hmm.
So they're gonna auction each lot? Is that the idea?
Auction each lot, or if someone wants to buy both of them. The concern we had was making sure they're outlots, so someone would have to come in with a preliminary plat.
Yeah.
Could just build a single home on West Avenue blocking further
Yeah, right.
roadway, so
Right.
To do anything, you can't build on an outlot, so they'd have to come back through with a preliminary plat.
Great, 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 great.
And as you can kind of see faintly in here, there are some roads, Dill Street and Gilbert.
Yeah.
There are some connections that will be, need to be made, and it just gets difficult because the property to the east of this is owned by someone else. And then you have Sunrise West, and then the Catholic Church owns kind of down to the southwest of the property. So getting into these infill sites with multiple owners gets difficult to kind of coordinate that, but that's wanting to go through that preliminary plat process, so that we're able to do that the best we can.
So is Sunrise West also going to develop further west?
Sunrise West has kind of this land right in here. They still own this lot here, and then this here. I know they have plans to develop this, and whether they develop this or sell that in the future
Yeah.
Hasn't been determined.
Yeah, alright.
Everybody good?
Good.
I like that idea.
Number 12. Resolution awarding contract for the 2017 Depot Storm Sewer Improvements.
Alright.
I have the next three here, and what I'll do is just give you guys a brief overview of what the project is. Again, we've done it once, but in case you guys have any questions, and then we'll go over the bid results and the budget for each. So the depot, again, we are rerouting the storm sewer to the north because it used to be run to the south. We had problems with the NSF getting it through their area, so we're redoing that. It'll eliminate the ponding in and around the depot, as well as providing a conveyance to pump the basement, because right now there's anywhere, well, right now since it's been dry, there's probably not much water in the crawl space, but when it's the wet season, there can be anywhere from a couple inches to a couple of feet of water under there. So that's what the project's aimed to do. The results on the next slide. We had three bids on this one. Five excavating was low at $268,602. Our engineer's estimate was well above that, and our budget was actually half a million for the 2017 miscellaneous sewer rehab, so I don't see any problems with moving forward on award for this if you guys don't. Questions?
You guys good?
Yes, good.
I'm excellent. I comes in with $400 budget. That's just sweet.
Awesome. Thank you, Jess.
So, go ahead.
What about number 13? Awarding contract for the 2017 erosion mitigation at corner of North Street and North Fourth Street.
There's the one. That's the one, okay.
Yeah, so this one was done by Klinger. The design was. The bids came back. Basically what we had here, you guys were familiar with that rain event that happened in 2016 where we had some sliding down the bluff. It came down onto Bluff Road, and we lost a little bit of the embankment up at the top. Originally, we'd looked at maybe doing a retaining wall. Klinger proposed these soil nails where basically they're drilling these big nails back into the bedrock, and then tying those to a mesh liner on the front of it as an alternative. We went ahead. We didn't really have any issues with anybody. It's kind of a specialty product that we haven't used around here, but we got one bid from GeoBuild LLC. We had another company that came about five minutes late from what I heard, but we never opened that one. The bid was within the engineer's cost estimate of $311,000. The low bid was $249,500, and the tentative schedule is starting right away and finishing up by September.
All the way from Punxsutawney. Questions?
Are they bringing Phil?
I don't know. I don't know. Phil is in P-H-I-L or F-I-O-L?
Both.
We need both.
Do they have some, do they have some facility close by? Surely you're not going to travel all the way from Punxsutawney, do you?
As far as I'm aware, they may have somebody close by that they, you know, sub everything through, but I haven't, I haven't talked to them yet.
Boy, that's
You'd be surprised about how far companies will go.
I guess I would be.
They have any equipment, man. They'll send their people and just, you know.
Yeah, and like I said, this is kind of a specialty application, so maybe they're used to traveling. I don't know.
But they, they actually shoot those into the bedrock?
Mm-hmm.
Let's see that.
Yeah.
Let's see that down. That's cool.
Pretty cool.
Okay.
We're good? Alright. Thanks, Jess. Next, number 14. Resolution awarding contract for the 2017 Agency Street Widening Project, West End.
So this is the west side of Agency Street, other side. There we go. From Highway 61 over to West Burlington Avenue. This one will add a traffic signal over there by the Hobby Lobby-Big Lots intersection. It won't be the temporary one anymore. We'll get a brand-new one. A sidewalk goes in on the north side of the road with ADA ramps and everything else, and we'll be installing a new rail crossing near the blood bank. The bids on this one, we only received one bid, and we didn't have anybody coming in late. The bid on this was $1,599,000. Our estimate was $1,437,000 roughly. The one thing I will note on this when we made our engineer's estimate, it was prior to adding repaving of the whole West Burlington intersection. We got that through the DOT, and we will be adding, I think it was roughly 850 square yards of additional removal and replacement there, so the discrepancy there isn't as high as it indicates, probably
With adding that in, would that still be, wouldn't that still kind of be within? Is that over, or actually wouldn't that be right within, right within what we were thinking, taking away the extra?
Yeah, if we add the extra intersection, that bid is within maybe $25,000 of what the engineering estimate would have been. So the rise program is involved in this one, so there is an 80/20 match, and we are partnered with West Burlington on this, so that amount isn't the total amount, won't pay. The tentative schedule, we'd be starting, the late start on this is July 10th, so it will be started July 10th or sooner, and they have 90 working days, which puts us in late October for a finish.
Agency Street will be open all the time?
Yes, yeah, will be open. We'll have at least one lane each way, yeah.
I'm excited about getting this done. This is a great project.
Yeah, no doubt. You're getting it done.
Where's that put us on that total amount of that project?
That shows there the local match, I think just shy of $500,000 for ours.
Uh, yeah, yeah, $493,000.
And we'll still be right in that range. When we did the, we did a borrowing for TIF-related projects earlier this spring. It included the
West.
This, the roundabout. It included West, Agency Street West, and maybe Agency Street East as well. And we have an overall dollar amount that we can move around a little bit. The roundabout is significantly under budget, so as we look at our matches on the different projects, we should, well, these first two are local matches. We're going to be ahead of what the original estimates were. So even if we're a little over on this one, we were under on the other one.
Right. Great.
You guys good?
Until we bid out, actually bid out next year, the Agency Street East, and see what that project actually costs, we'll have a decent idea at that point if we, where we're fit for what we borrowed for TIF financing for the three projects. If we have to, if that one ends up significantly over budget, we may have to have a discussion about how we're covering that shortfall, but right now we're okay.
Good?
Outstanding.
Thanks, Jess.
Thank you, Jess.
Number 15. Resolution awarding contract for the Parkview Care Facility Asbestos Abatement and Demolition Project. Mr. Tizen?
We received five bids for the asbestos abatement and demo of the site with bids ranging from $380,000 to $426,500. Did receive a little bit of $380,000 from G&amp;B Construction LLC from Burlington. Engineer's estimate was approximately $390,000 for the project. Majority of the project is asbestos abatement. I guess the larger portion of the cost is asbestos abatement. Currently, the city has a little over $304,000 in the demolition fund. Additional $20,000 is allocated in the CIP in future years, and we would be using $25,000 from the DNR program for asbestos abatement. For the site, we do plan to subdivide the property into three buildable residential lots upon completion. It is to be graded to drain, and currently looking at that, it would be approximately 93 by 180-foot lots. The lots on the west side of this development are 70 by 125, so it'd be a little larger than these lots on the western side. And projected to receive approximately $60,000 to $90,000 from the sale of those lots. I guess the goal of this was to eliminate the longstanding vacant building from this neighborhood, improve the area through the redevelopment efforts, but as you can see, this is more than the actual amount in our demolition fund, but we hope to recapture that through the sale of the property, as well as using DNR funds and our demo funds going forward.
I think maybe we should talk to G&amp;B and see if we can get the price down a little bit. They do real good work. Huh? Do you want to talk about it? Maybe we'll talk later. You guys good?
We're happy to receive five bids on the project. It is a very large project. Three very local here with the low bid from Burlington.
Good deal.
Good.
I'm curious how it is we weren't able to go back against the millionaires that used to own this property and recover the cost, or force them to demo it, or
There's the million-dollar question.
Part of it was through our
You're doing stuff.
Abandon unsafe. We can demo it without acquiring it. That goes as a lien against the property, and then we'd have no control over future development or sale. That's our, been our typical process in the past before we started acquiring properties, and then we had properties sit there with $380,000, well, not this much, but we have a lot of properties with $5,000 to $10,000 liens that just sit there, and then we're baiting them for tall grass down the road. So acquiring it was seen as the best way to actually see something happen with this and redevelop in the future, but it is a large cost. We would have come up with that cost regardless of whether we owned it or not, if the owner decided not to do it, but now we're able to sell the lots and redevelop the area.
I just, I asked that question because I had a phone call today from a gentleman that made a statement he had worked for that, the people that owned that building. They owned a lot of property in town, and I don't know if they still do or not. He didn't say, but he said it's just, it's pretty sad that taxpayers have to
It is pretty sad.
Put this bill when we've got two, two people that own that property that are millionaires, and still able to take advantage of the, of the people, this community. I told him I'd say that for him.
You're bringing me down, Tim.
Don't mean to bring you down. I just promised he might say that. I said it.
That's a good question.
This was another one of those properties that changed hands two or three times over the last five years from the original owners and go to tax sale, and then they think they have plans for it and realize they don't want to do anything and try and sell it again, similar to Apollo, so.
We can always count on G&amp;B waiting in the wings, right?
Hello, hello.
Are we good? Okay. Number 16. Resolution adopting the employee handbook, Steph.
In your packet is the updated employee handbook. We've been working on this a couple of years with our attorney. The last time it was updated was 2009. Some of the biggest changes is basically we removed forms from the current handbook, and now they're all going to be located on CityNet. So basically, the handbook is just a little bit more condensed, hopefully a little bit easier to read. It just includes the policies. We made language changes, and like I said, Patrick, the city attorney went over all our policies to make sure that he felt they were enforceable and legal. We also met with the unions last week to review it. They've seen it to see if they had any questions or any concerns. They didn't, because again, the majority of the policies, there's just language tweaks to make it easier. One of the things that I did send a handout out, one thing I wanted us to review was the residency requirement policy on page 22. Right now, it's the current policy, which is 10 air miles for the critical employees and department heads who live in Des Moines County. I wanted to see what you guys thought about changing that requirement to 15 air miles. So if, Eric, you want to put that map up?
I don't know.
It's already up there. It shows you what it expands. Right now, our residency requirement is you have to live in the state of Iowa, so Illinois is, that's why it's blank. So if we would expand out to 15 miles, basically you're going to pick up Fort Madison, New London, Minneapolis, just a little bit further. As we started looking at also our comparable cities, which that's that second handout I gave you, it kind of explains, you know, what other cities kind of are size, non-metro area, what kind of residency requirements they have too. Just to see, and it, you can see where the trend is to expand, basically for recruitment purposes, to get some candidates that are interested in working for the city but don't actually live in the residency requirements. I know you can, Clinton, their basically critical employees are within 20 miles, and then there are other employees that don't have any restrictions. Fort Dodge, they just changed it in September, and they expanded from 10 to 15 miles. Marshalltown, they have driving requirements, and I'm sure that's for response time. And then other employees, there's no restrictions. Mason City, it's 10 miles. Muscatine, 30 air miles. I'm assuming they're trying to draw on some of the Quad City people to come down and work for them. And the Tamwa, basically, they dropped all their residency requirements a few years ago, except the fire department. They still have the 10-mile limit, again, I'm sure for emergency purposes. So basically, when I met with the unions, we did kind of go over this to see what they thought about it, and they thought it would be a good idea if it helped with recruitments. We also had the discussion at the department head level, and I know our fire department would like to keep the 10 air miles for their department, but some of the other departments felt that it would be helpful to recruit other candidates, and I'll let the police chief talk. He had an example that might have helped him out if we had a change in that.
Yeah, just last Saturday when we had our testing as an example, the people that passed everything, they'll come and get an application. They can apply at eight different departments, and one of the people walked up to me that was, I thought was going to take an application, and he said, "Well, what are your residency requirements?" I said, "Well, 10 air miles." And he said, "Well, I live in Fort Madison." He said, "I really would like to come to Burlington and be a police officer." And I said, "Well, you can't do that unless you're willing to move within 10 air miles of the city." So I do think it's a trend, and he had a family that was in Fort Madison. He wasn't willing to do that, but I do think it's a trend, and our numbers just decrease, 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 and so the more requirements we put on it, you know, I think is being a little bit detrimental to what we're trying to do with, with the fight we're trying to fight by getting police applicants. And our, our response time, you have to remember, is immediate, and it's the people on the shift. And when we have one of these major critical incidents, we're calling people in, but whether they get there in 10 minutes, 15 minutes, 20 minutes, at that point, the incident itself's over. It's all management now of the incident. I mean, we need crime scene security, and we need people to document evidence, and we need those services, but they sure don't have to be within the first four or five minutes. I mean, I've been in the industry for 30 years, and I just, I just, I really can't think of the example that they had, that we had to have all this personnel and it had to be here in the next five minutes. I mean, granted, we have incidents, and we need personnel, and we call personnel in, but that, that response isn't critical for us. Our critical response is, is within two or three minutes, and those are the people that are here that are on duty to do that. So I just wanted to, I mean, for sure, we had one person that would have filled out an application at the police department that's not going to. So as an example.
Well, you answered my question. Thank you.
Also, in kind of researching, like, we know maybe when this policy started, I know Kathleen had found in the code ordinance book that from the '70s that we did have, back then we had the 10 air miles within the corporate city limits too. And you think what's changed between now and then is we do have these four-lane highways. To come from Fort Madison now is really quick. Hopefully someday it'll be just as quick to come down from Minneapolis. Even New London, you know, you're on a four-lane highway now, so.
I just want to say this, because I said this a long time ago, and I, I just feel the same way on this, and it's not personal. To me, I always feel like if you're going to work in Burlington, you got to live in Burlington. You got to know the people in Burlington. You got to be, I just, I like the what's in place. I like that people know their neighbors. They see them. They're committed, and I think, yeah, I don't, I don't like the thought of somebody living in Fort Madison and coming and working in Burlington, and then going back to Fort Madison. I don't like that at all. That's just me, but as far as that, I just, I'm never for that. I'm always an inside-city man.
What about Muscatine, Clinton, Davenport? Do they allow people to live in Illinois and work in their city?
I know, I asked Muscatine. They leave, let their seasonals come from Illinois, but I think, I know, like Doug, Doug's department, that if you're a police officer or fire, you have to live in Iowa to be certified. We require an Iowa driver's license, so
That's the crucial element, isn't it?
Yeah, it's required by law.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. But I know, and I think Dubuque too. I called them once. I don't think I listed them. They only open it up for seasonal employees.
Seasonal, okay, but like your public works department?
CDL, CPR, ICU.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, we want to keep everything in Iowa.
Okay, that answers my question. Thanks, Jess.
So like I said, that page I handed out, the top bolded ones are all our comparable cities. Like I said, very similar in size. And then I just listed out some other ones. A lot of emails go through the HR group that I'm in, and people will say, "What are your police requirements?" And so I kind of just jot them down and keep them updated. You can see Iowa City too just increased two years ago. They were 10 miles. Now they're 17. So, you know, what we're seeing is the recruitment, like the chief describes, so.
It's a hard conversation to have for, for us to bring up from a staff, staff side, because we do understand you as a council have to try to figure out what's that balance between protecting, wanting to keep people, have people live in the city, work here, versus making sure that you have the appropriate, specifically, the areas that we're the most concerned about is on emergency services, having the right ability to recruit folks to make sure that we adequately staff in a time when it's tight and hard to get those positions built anyway. And we can talk about emergency services. It's ones that is a little bit more to the forefront, but we have other areas too. Not all of our areas do we have trouble recruiting, but we do have different departments, and it is just hard to find people who are qualified to do. But this is really, this is a policy decision from a council perspective as to how do you balance out those very two contradictory concerns.
Correct.
Yeah, the only, the only reason I like this is because if there are departments who are struggling to find people, it's, it's not going to change if we keep it at the 10-mile. You know, trying to force those people to move in, it's not going to work. So the only way to do that really is to expand it. That is the only reason, you know, I like it, but I definitely understand where you're coming from. I feel, you know, work here, live here. And maybe, maybe later on down the road, they will find something. Maybe they want to establish a workplace first.
What about commitment? What about if you're going to be, if you're going to get a job, you're committed to the job, you bring your family in? You know, I miss those days, you know, and people, they, "Well, we're going to move this job. We're moving the family." You move into Burlington.
Yeah.
You know about Burlington? You're committed to Burlington? You're paying taxes in Burlington? That's just where I am. You know, that's just where I am.
Well, usually you got to find a job first before you move, so who knows? Maybe these people won't, maybe no one will ever be in the 15-mile.
I'm just saying, to me, I'm looking at the stock that we've had over the years. I've been in Burlington for 48 years, and we've had a lot of good employees that we've got within 10 air miles, so, you know, that's where I am. You know, that's where I am. Anybody else want to talk about it, or?
I'm okay with the 15. I'm okay with that.
I am too. I don't, I don't see the difference between the 10 and the 15 from the standpoint of your loyalty standpoint. I mean, we've already got 10 established. If another five is going to help us recruit for positions in the city, which were, there are, everybody I know in town, contractors to restaurant owners to retail outlets are looking for people. I know they're struggling the same way as what the city is, and the city's at a greater disadvantage because they don't, because they have limitations on where people can live, so I'm not that concerned with that.
And you're groovy on a two then, Annie? Okay.
So I can change this handbook to be presented next week for the 15 air miles.
Alright.
Yeah, do you want me to leave the fire department with the 10 as the fire chief would like?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so we'll leave fire with 10, and then we'll do 15 for all other employees.
Yeah, could you put a note in there that fire chiefs cannot live at the bottom of hills in the winter?
Okay.
Unless they got a tractor that they can pull a guy out.
Did you get that tractor?
He's got a tractor, so he's good.
Did you have any other questions on the handbook?
I didn't.
Okay, so I'll make that change, and it will be presented that way for next week.
Thank you, Steph.
Okay, thanks.
Alright. Resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. Any problems there, guys?
Except that they're there.
Yeah, no doubt, no doubt. Always a problem with that. Resolution approving final acceptance and final payment for the 2016 Depot Great Room renovation. Mr. Mack?
Can you throw up the finance first? Or throw up the pictures second? The resolution before you will make the final payment to Chicken Dance Construction for the completion of the Great Room renovation project at the depot. In front of you or on the, on the projector is the, kind of a description of the finances. The overall project costs about $755,000. It was originally bid out at 672. There were 16 change orders over the, over the scope of the project. There were sixteen change orders over the, over the scope of the project, of which two change orders were two alternative bids in order to try and keep it at, the base bid relatively low in a form, within a, they didn't know what they were going to get, so they bid it out with several alternatives to award over time, of which the fire sprinklers were one of them, and that was about $34,000. And the second change order was, was switched with the HVAC system. And several of them were just during construction. You have to have this, that wasn't accounted for, so. In total, we contributed $120,000. We had the $480,000 PTIG grant. We had $14,000 from Alliant. As of date, we have been paid by the Friends of the Depot approximately $117,000. $22,000 remains. And off to the right, you can see some incidentals that we took care of, just as part of the job, the insurance, the security cameras, and then the utilities, so. In total, our contribution levels are relatively the same, but the total price comes out to There is a one-year warranty on the work in the interior of the things that have been completed. At about nine months from the substantial completion date, which was May 2nd, Klingner and Associates and Chicken Dance Construction will do a walkthrough to see if there's anything that needs to be performed and brought up to. The most specific thing is, is like the columns. When you have the temperature change, some of the expansion on that tends to happen, so they're going to go in and make sure if those things need to be patched, they'll be patched. The roof has a thirty-year warranty, that twenty, sorry, twenty-year warranty, I apologize, twenty-year warranty that started on the completion of that, and I believe that was last August. If you want to throw the pictures up, I have some pictures that kind of show the before and after on the changes of what they were. At the top, you can see the northwest corner of where the windows were. You want to scroll down? And then you can see today, the windows in the northwest corner are new, and I think they help a lot with efficiency and heat savings. If you want to go down to the next page. Here's just a western shot of those windows. You can see that they had the old wood frame, and now they're, the aluminum powder coating. Looks a lot cleaner. This is in the inside of the great room looking south. You can see the, the wood framing there. That used to be the old Amtrak waiting room. Essentially, it was a hallway that had access to the restrooms and then to the doors on the east and west side of the building. If you scroll down, you can see what that looks like now with all that framing work down. The thing that I don't think you can really, I don't know if there's pictures of it, but the ticket booths were all closed in with old wood paneling, something they had done prior to our ownership of it, and now that's all opened up. If you go to the next page, there's just another view of what that looked like. So, there was, you could see inside there, but you couldn't access any of it, and it helped with some, some climate control. It was a lot easier to control that space than it was the other stuff.
That's pretty good.
If you'd go to the next page, too. So, this is the inside of that old hallway waiting room. You can see it's fairly closed in. If you, that's kind of the same, the view of what it looks like now, so. There's one more page, just another viewpoint of that old hallway that used to be there. So, I could go over the different things that we accomplished, but I think if you've made yourself, made your way down there, it's definitely a much, a bigger improvement than...
It is, it looks, it looks a lot better.
So, what's to come? We, we applied for the HRDP grant in conjunction with the money that we're planning on spending on the old former Greer site with the windows and the doors, and then we're also planning to try and get the grant money to do the floors. If you could, I don't know if you've been down there, or if you've seen the pictures, there's kind of a haze in them. I think some of the biggest problem that's been created is, is unconditioned space along with floodwaters that have come into that place, as well as rainwater that have entered through, you know, leaky roof and windows, and then it etches into that terrazzo, so. Hopefully, with this, we'll hear in about a month and a half whether we receive the grant, and then we can bring the floors up to their former glory.
And the status in terms of gears, we've met with Matt Murray a few weeks ago, took some of the thoughts from that meeting to the, our city attorney to draft a lease on that. We got an initial draft from the attorney last week, and we met just today, really, to kind of go over some things that we still need to get adjusted in it before we present it to Matt. His goal was to try to get that up to the council sometime about the beginning of July. He was not in a rush to get it done sooner than that. He also knows that we, well, I got delayed on this by two weeks besides anything else. So, that may push us back towards it later side of July before we have that presented. But that is moving forward to try to get brought up to you, too.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Number three, resolution approving lease agreement for the home at 1720 Dill Street at Perkins Park. Mr. Tisland?
This is an update to the current lease agreement that would expire in July. We leased out the home in Perkins Park. That's at the west side of the shelter houses there for a number of years. Previously, that homeowner is required to do some maintenance and opening and closing the shelter houses. Felt that wasn't, I guess, the most reliable or working the best, so it's something that we're transitioning to, having a market rate rent for the home, and then just having that by park staff to make sure it's done appropriately in the future. So, this would be going to a $550 monthly rent from, previously, it was, I think, $225, so not having those duties by that person, but also raising the rent accordingly.
How many bedrooms?
It's a three-bedroom, two upstairs, one downstairs. The upstairs is rather cold.
It's a pretty good rent for a three-bedroom right by the park.
It's not a very...
You know, not much privacy.
Not much privacy, and it's, it's not a very updated home as well.
And do we have somebody currently in there that's willing to stay?
Maybe, yeah, express interest.
You guys good?
Yes.
That's a good move. That's a good move. Number four, resolution approving an agreement with Vainster and Kim, Inc. to perform the Design of the Agency Street Widening Project east of Roosevelt Avenue to Melrose Court. Jess?
So, for this project, it's the Agency Street East widening. That area in yellow will be widened. There was a traffic safety improvement study done three or four years ago, and we got a half-million-dollar grant to make some things happen. The money expires in basically a year from now, so we're under a big push to get it done with our current workload. There was no way we were going to tackle this one in-house, because there's some substantial utilities that need to get moved and safety improvements that need to be looked at. So, we went out for proposals on this. I think I've covered everything. Yeah, so, next slide, we, we evaluated three different consultants. We evaluated them on cost, experience, completion of similar projects, and proposed design schedule. The ratings you'll see there, V and K was, was the highest. Their low bid was $170,800. They were the low bid. The next highest bid was within $5,000, but that was shy of Hattery, and they had some other things that weren't as favorable as V and K were, so. Any questions on this? We're planning on December 19th, Iowa Department of Transportation letting, and then first thing in the spring would be start construction and accomplishing the half-million dollars to satisfy the grant, and then the rest was TIF funding.
All right. You guys good?
Yes.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Jess.
Number five, resolution amending parking rates for downtown reserved parking spaces.
This is an amendment based on the presentation given by Charlie Nichols with the Downtown Parking Committee, modifying the current rates to represent a seven-thirty to five lease timeframe, as well as twenty-four-hour timeframe, and raising those rates for twenty-four-hour timeframe, while the current rates would be maintained for the seven-thirty to five timeframe. Part of this was in an effort to expand the use of parking lots in the downtown that are leased during the day, sit empty at night, especially with the number of apartments that are moving downtown that would allow some of the, either downtown events or people that live downtown to be able to park overnight in those areas as well, while also representing the lease rates comparable to, we have some private lots that lease in the $40, $42 range currently, and in our comparable cities, we're well underneath all our other comparable cities in lease rates.
We could be having worse problems with her downtown, that's for sure. You guys good with that?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, we've got a set date for public hearings, July 3rd. Consideration for plans and specs for 2017 Law Enforcement Center. And then we've got two discussion items. Summer activities?
Rhonda, I got to say, before you start, I went to the library today, and there's a young little girl, I don't know if she was ten, eight, maybe. She was all excited. She came out of the library, says, "I want to read twenty books a week." And I thought, wow, that is really a goal, yeah. She's going to be as smart as her mother when she's doing that.
So, for the last couple of years, I've come about this time of year to just give an overview of some of the special activities and services that the city offers during the summer. So, of course, I'm going to be talking about the library, but I'm going to mention some of the others as well, and, you know, others may have some things to add as we go along. So, one of the things that I found when I was putting this together is sort of the theme is partnerships. Every one of these is some sort of partnership amongst city departments or with outside organizations or businesses, all of them coming together to maximize the impact on the community and make these things possible. So, I think you'll see a lot of those as we go along. And one of the key things that we found is awareness. I'm sure you've heard that every now and then you hear from someone who says, "Oh, there's nothing to do in Burlington," and there's so much to do in Burlington. A lot of it's just getting the word out. And so, last year, we started a Facebook page, Burlington Summer, and we did this with Public Works, because that was, we were just meeting with them about the free bus rides, and also with the school district. And so, the school district actually put these magnets together that you have there and distributed those. We have some at the library distribute, too. I could get you more, because I have plenty, if you had someone you want to give them to. The first year that there were the free bus rides, everyone got together and said, "How are we going to get the word out?" They did a handout, but, you know, as you know, once something's in print, it, something gets outdated within, you know, almost the time it's printed. And so, we thought this was a better way to constantly be able to update people on things, and also, you kids taking print things home at the end of the school year. Sometimes they make it, sometimes they don't, and if they do, they're getting a mountain of papers, so parents may miss it, too. So, we thought a magnet would stick out a little bit better and be something they could keep and throw up on the refrigerator and remember to refer to. So, that's why we went ahead and went with the Facebook page, and it worked really well last year. We have over a thousand people following it now, and we kept it going through the year. We didn't just do summer, so anytime something that seemed like something parents with young children might be interested in, we'd throw it up on there throughout the year to kind of keep building that awareness of all the different services that are out there. So, we share things about lots of different things, but like I said, it was the free bus rides that really brought us, all these different people together to talk about how can we build awareness? And so, this year, we shared that. You can see, had over 10,000 people, it's reached over 144 shares on Facebook, so a lot of people reacting to it. There were some questions. I put all those on here, but that's one of the nice things about the Facebook page, too, is when there's a question, it pops up on my phone, and I can answer it or call someone and find out the answer. And, you know, being a librarian, that's kind of what I do. I'm answering questions, so I, I love that. I started out as a reference librarian, so answering questions is great. And a lot of positive comments. We had people who've been using it over the last couple of years who posted and said, "It's great. My kids really benefited from it." Did you have anything you wanted to share about the bus ride?
Actually, I have a slideshow.
He brings pictures.
More on that after. He'll give us some more on the, on all of that. So, we, we also share things about the pool, because obviously, that's a huge service that the city offers in the summer. You can see when, when I shared, where's Becky at the library, shared the free swim day that we just had, it reached over 37,000 people and had over 680 shares. Lots and lots of people took notice of that, so that was big. And I was driving through the park this weekend, and lots of people were at the pool, so. And we shared about the swim lessons, which is another great service that the city offers as well. And then, of course, we make sure to share about other departments and what they're doing, and you all know about the Hoops and Eats that's coming up in July, which I'll say, I just checking out books today, they're due in three weeks. They're due on July 3rd, so we only have three weeks till the Fourth of July, which is just, can't believe how fast the summer's going. So, this event will be here before we know it. Another thing that we make sure to share about is things the school district is doing. I said, originally, we got together with them. They did these magnets. One of their great services is the summer food program that I think a lot of people aren't aware of. Anyone under eighteen can eat for free. You can see, right now, it's just at the high school, but it will, oh, did I do the high school twice? I apologize. Course is the other location. I think that starts June 26th. If you go to the Facebook page, it has both of those on there. I just copied the same one twice. But that, this program, you don't have to be a Burlington School District student to go to it. It can be anyone under the age of eighteen who can come and get that meal. So, I really encourage families to take advantage of that, and adults can go, I think, it's a small fee for adults. And so, one of the other services, then, that the city offers is the City Summer Camp. And this, I called to ask about it. It filled up really early this year. I understand maybe the earliest it's ever filled up? Is that right?
Yeah, and I think part of that's due to the free bus rides, as well as the lunch provided daily is something that people see, and that's busing them to the schools to utilize that, so we're utilizing multiple services there, and that's been a big draw, and getting it out on Facebook has helped, and, you know, we filled up sooner, and we're at capacity right now for our summer camp.
And this is every day?
Every day during the summer, yep, all summer long.
And it's such a deal, too.
Wow.
I mean, if you...
It's run through Brad's, Brad Selby, but we hire seasonal people that man the camp.
And this program's been around for a while. I think since awareness gets out, it's probably going to keep filling up early like that. So, I have a couple other slides where I pulled a few things about it. One of the things I loved here, this, you can follow their Facebook page, and you can see what they're doing, either for that day or that week. This was last week, and again, just that partnership. So, they were at the park, but then they came to the library and reserved one of our rooms to show a movie, and we were showing a movie that afternoon, and I thought, oh, I wish they could have just come to ours. But then we had about fifty kids at ours, and I thought, no, that would have been, we would have invested at the scene, so it's good that they were able to do it at their own time, because they've got quite a few kids. So, you can see, they came to the library for that, and then they also went for lunch at the high school, and they were only able to do that because of those bus rides. In the past, they weren't able to come to the library, go for those meals as much. And again, I just was on their, their Facebook page. You see some great reviews from this here already, and one of them points out, they even feed the kids, which is unbelievable, due to the low cost for this program. So, it's a great program. I've been a working mom for seventeen years, and, you know, I know that any parent, you need to find some great programs for your kids in the summer, and being able to do that can be tricky sometimes, so it's, it's a wonderful service, and I love now that there's more partnership and we can do more things together. Makes a big difference. Okay, so then I'll talk about the library for a little bit. So, of course, it's summer reading time, and we all have on our summer reading t-shirts at the library, we're all wearing our tennis shoes. Last Monday was the first day of summer reading. We checked out 4,000 items, and just to put that in perspective, I went back and looked some previous dates in May and earlier in June, and anywhere from 900 to maybe 1,500 was a typical day. So, 4,000 was a huge day, and I think they all came back today, as we were checking in a lot today, and a lot of people there checking out things. So, we have four different programs that we offer that cover all ages, so it's the kind of thing that families, every one in the family could participate. So, whether it's encouraging families to read to their littlest ones, the babies and toddlers, or working with young kids who are just starting to have literacy skills and learning to read, or our tweens and teens, and I say, parents can set a good example and participate as well, everyone can get in on the fun with that. And I do, you know, it's fun, which is great, but why we do it is really because of what this, this study is talking about, that the ability to read is critical to a child's success in school, to their lifelong earning potential, and their ability to contribute to our nation's economy and security, that kids who aren't up to reading level by the end of third grade are more likely to drop out of school. So, we really need to hit these kids early and keep that learning going through the summer, and so that's why public libraries all throughout the country do some... And so that's why public libraries all throughout the country do summer reading programs this time of year, so. We refer to it as preventing summer slide, that kids lose reading ability, lose skills over the summer. It's not just they miss out on two months of learning, it's they actually lose skills they had the beginning of the school year, so, or at the end of the school year, excuse me. So if they were tested the end of the school year when they come back, the beginning of the next year, if they didn't do any sort of learning activities in the summer, they're likely to have fallen behind and need a lot of...
You know what else that does? This was always my biggest complaint. When I was going to school, it would hold back everybody else because we all had to read. We were out of the library, so then when you go back to school, they've got to do this review that the kids that are reading, we don't need that review, we're ready to go. So they're holding, you know, it is, it's holding people back. It's a, it's where it's at, it really is, reading comprehension, it is.
Yeah, it affects so many different things. So the next slide just shows it a little bit different way too. It's not something that just happens in the one summer. It's something that compounds over the summer. So kids who have summer learning are gaining in the summer and moving ahead. Kids who don't are sliding back a little, having to catch up, sliding back some more the next summer to where you get to the point where there could be as much as a grade level behind other kids in school. So it's about closing that achievement gap. And unfortunately, you know, you see that gap along economic lines. So kids who are in middle-class families, middle-income students, they refer to it here, are more likely to have books in the home. They're more likely to have families that can afford to take them to or enroll them in different learning opportunities than low-income students. So they're more likely to fall into that summer slide. So all of that is to say, that's really what's behind all the fun things that we do in the summer. We want to encourage kids to come out and have fun, but at the same time, keep learning, keep reading. So this is just a snapshot of the things that are going on this week alone at the library. So lots of different things going on. The next slide gives just a couple of key ones. Today, we just had our, we call them Mega Monday. So we did Lego Robotics first thing and then we did some STEM activities. We did coding and then some Minecraft at the end of the day. And kids can sign up for one or all of them. I'm not quite sure what they were doing with the celery stick there, but I'm really curious to find out. They, they were still in working when I left, so I didn't get a chance to go find out. So the rest of June is also filled with activities to sign up for. July is equally as full, that's the next slide there. With things that kids and adults can come do, it's all, so you have a copy of that there. If you already have one, share it with somebody else. I say there, those calendars are color-coded to show the different age ranges that can come to the different events. And one of the fun things that we've done now for a few years is our bookmobile. And this again was a partnership with the school district. There was a school district employee who came and said, "I want to do this." She got a school district vehicle and one of the dealerships in town wrapped it with a nice picture on the side, so to identify it as the bookmobile. And we took it around town the last couple of years. She did a lot of the driving, the teacher did. And this year she's not doing that, but our staff is getting out, doing three stops. Today was our first Monday to go out and take the books to the kids. Because again, you know, it just, every family's different. You may not have the opportunity during the day to come down to the library and participate. So we want to take it to you. So you can still check out books, you can still participate in the summer reading program. We added this year a couple of trips out to Middletown. As you know, they contract with us for services. And one of the reasons we could do that this year is because the school district is allowing us to keep the van for the summer for the two years, or two, two years, two months, that we will be going around and doing that. And thank you to Public Works for keeping the vehicle out there for us so that's safe and secure and has a good place. But we're able to try a few more things that way. Again, partnerships, this is in our summer reading booklet. If you sign up for summer reading, you get a big booklet of information. All of our different partners in the community, businesses that make this possible. The summer reading program offers different prizes and things like that that are donated by businesses. Also people are giving funds to, to contribute to the programs that we have. So the one we had up earlier, Absolute Science, which is tomorrow's big program in the afternoon, is sponsored by a couple here in town. But each of those programs are sponsored, so all paid for by those donors. And there's another page of them actually, we have quite a few donors. And actually, if you see the back of my shirt, that's all of our donors this year. So it's the first year we've done the shirt. We may need a bigger shirt if we keep getting more donors, it's kind of full there, so. I want to highlight this one because it's a little unusual. It's this Saturday from 2:00 to 4:00 in the library's parking lot. ISU will be here with the world's first practical solar utility vehicle. They're going around to all 99 counties. And the person who called me to set it up is actually a Burlington raised person who went to ISU and worked on this project. And so he was handling getting into Des Moines County for their visit here. So it's nice that we can have them come to Burlington. So I think it's to be kind of interesting to see what this vehicle is like.
Yeah, so is it something people ride in or is it, what is it?
Yeah, the vehicle is gonna be there. And yeah, in the press release they sent me, it said that they might let people actually ride in it. So I know, I'm kind of curious to come and find out.
Barbell run?
There you go, a little practice.
Without gas?
So, yeah, it should be really interesting.
Airball walking. Airball pull.
And I know we weren't even allowed to release a picture of it until just recently because it was all under wraps and so I'm curious to see what it's all about. So I invite you to come to that. I think it'll be really interesting for all ages to come and see that. So I'll let Nick do his presentation. If you have questions for any of us, we can help with that.
I do, but it's an unrelated question, so don't let me forget to ask.
So I wanted to give you an update on, we've run the free ride programs for, this will be the third year. I just wanted to give you kind of numbers on what, what that looks like. So in the first year, so I didn't break it up in fiscal years even though that's the way we do our reporting, but 6,800 the first year, 6,500 last year. And then year-to-date, I say year-to-date, it's been a week. So we did 556 rides last week, so. The rides started last Monday and they go until August 11th.
Did you draw that picture, Nick?
I did not, I borrowed it from a predecessor, so I didn't want to change it. I didn't say steal this time, so. You go to the next slide for me. And so other than its intrinsic value on giving kids free rides, there is a monetary value in it. During the school year, there's about 900 riders per day. And then during the summer, it drops off to 600. So it just means their operating cost per rider goes up. And this math, it shows that they're getting free rides, but it turns into backend dollars with the DOT of Iowa and then also the FTA. So it turns into about a dollar a ride. So over the last couple of years, we give out those free rides and get about $6,500 back correlated to those free rides. That's it, I think, just a short little slideshow. Any questions?
The picture made it all for me, Nick, that was fantastic. Kudos to your predecessor. Anyways, any problems with the appointments, guys?
I have a question for Rhonda, I want to ask her about the, the, what do you, do you call it still a cafeteria or what do you call it?
Yes, right, the coffee shop.
Coffee shop, that's it. You're looking for somebody to take it over now or what?
We are, yes, thank you for asking about that. So for four years, Hope Haven operated the coffee shop out of our facility. And as I tell you, I think it was a really great partnership. We acted as a business incubator for them because they weren't in that business of food service until they tried it in our little shop. And then I don't know if it was maybe about a year ago, maybe a little more than that, they opened up Tastefully Yours downtown. And they've decided, I think due to budget issues and other things like that, to move into that. And I hear they may be expanding there as well, so. So it's really gotten them into that business. We don't have a full kitchen in our coffee shop. They do, where they're at, Tastefully Yours, they do a lot of catering. And so I think that's a really good fit for them. So it was a great partnership where it's really sad to, that they've, aren't with us anymore, but it was a really good thing and I think was a great way for them to get started in that. So we are looking for someone.
Partner.
In the meantime, yeah, more partnering that we want to do. In the meantime, we are using, actually that picture of the young boy with his celery stick doing whatever with the computer there, they are using that for summer programs. We're using it as an extra meeting room space and event space until we possibly get someone else in there or do something different with that space. So we've talked to a few different people, nothing yet, so. But we have some other ideas if it doesn't continue as a coffee shop in quite the same way.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions for us or any of us about our summer programs?
Rampin' up for the summer.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Awesome. Mr. Teszler, you got anything before we go? Ms. Wilson?
Well, it's a busy week.
Yes, it is.
We got Stevo Days.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The Snake Alley Art Fair. It's, we're celebrating 50 years, so it's gonna be big. So remember that on Sunday to come out and enjoy yourself. And then after that, you just swing on down to Crepo, Crepo Park for the municipal band concert.
You have issues, you really do.
That starts at 7:30.
Right on, right on.
What time's the parade? Is it noon?
That's at 10 o'clock.
I think 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock, okay, on Saturday, right?
Yeah.
And then the farmer's market on Thursday, that's all.
She said the farmer's market on Thursday. Delicious food, is that all you got?
Yes.
That's plenty. Mr. Scott?
The Stevo Days Parade, if anybody's rolling, throwing out candy, 9:30, you know the spot. If anybody else wants to come, you're welcome. We're gonna need the city car, we need the Prius. I want to thank the after-school, summer school program. They're doing a fantastic job out to Camp Alkeeta and I got a chance to go out there, spend some good time. It's just a fantastic, it really was, it was awesome. Just want to thank everybody that had something to do with that and to Mr. Carper for inviting me. Also to, I went to the memorial service this weekend. I graduated, Greg Poland, class of '87, of course he knows everybody. Graduated and with Greg Poland, he was the speaker and it was good to see him, it had been a long time. And just a very good, very good service. And that was the only thing I had to say. If anybody's gonna throw out some candy or walk in the Stevo Days Parade, meet me on block down from City Hall about 9:20 to 9:30.
Were the appointments okay?
Yeah. Everybody?
Any issues out there? How many people do you have at your first free swim day?
I don't recall the exact numbers, they're over 950.
996. When was the last time you had that many people at the pool?
Probably the last free day.
Was it the last free day?
It was a pretty successful...
It was a good day, yep.
And Brad Selby. That's for you, my friend. Anything else?
Yeah, one of the things I was thinking about, Rhonda, you had 4,000 items that first week. I think our kids probably did 20 per kid, so we might have been about 1,000.
It's 100 of those for no kids.
I'll be in DC with the Southeast Iowa Regional Day trip out there the next three days. So if you need something, you're probably gonna get it through Nick or Stephanie as opposed to me. Other than that, I really don't have anything.
Okay, well, you have a safe trip, come back safe. And I think that's covering it for tonight. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thank you, Council.
While you're there, take away the president's follow-away.